We are live, just so everyone's aware. But we will hold off until we have our form. It looks like we have four board members at the moment. I will text Justin, I believe he was supposed to be here. And Bruce, we're missing both. It's only 6:01. We have a phone call-in user who just joined. Their phone number ends in 88. Can you identify yourself for the record?
Marie Higgins.
Hi, what application are you here on?
Not, I was just listening to the meeting.
Okay, no problem. I'm going to mute you for the moment so we don't get feedback, but then we will unmute you when we have public portion in case you'd like to participate, okay?
Okay, no problem, thank you.
Thank you.
Ally, is Dave Garfield coming tonight? On tonight?
You're right, I don't see him either.
I don't see him. I see Heim Sable and Jakey.
I just texted Bruce and Justin as well.
Okay.
Do you want me to call Dave?
I don't know, we just need one to go. Heim Sable could stay the whole time tonight, or Jakey?
I don't think Jake can, I'm not sure about Heim.
I would like to leave by 8:30 o'clock.
Okay, no problem. Heim, we all do.
Bruce and Justin are both supposed to be here, so hopefully we'll have...
Hello, I'm here, David.
Hi Dave, we were just talking about you, how are you?
Oh, it's a good thing I got on the phone.
So, were you listening when we're talking about you?
No, I wasn't.
Okay.
Good or bad?
Only good things to say about you.
All good.
Oh, Justin is here, I see Justin as well.
Okay, now...
We have plenty of members now.
I think we have six. Hi Justin, how are you?
Hello Chairman.
Hi, how are you? Okay, Mr. Jackson, are you here? Or Jillian? We need the flag, and we'll start.
We're both here, I guess I have to go get a flag.
Okay.
Bear with me.
One, two...
And hold it up high.
I have a flag right here, where to go?
Charlie, I'm here.
Hi Bruce, thank you.
I don't know, can you see the flag?
Okay, now we see it. Okay. We'll call the meeting tomorrow. Let's rise and salute the flag. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ally, please read into the certification of compliance. I would ask everybody, please move to...
I got it, sorry. I hit mute all too quickly and I cut off Mr. Herzl, but everyone's quiet. I'm gonna share my screen and I'll read the certification of compliance. "The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the township of Lakewood at least 48 hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act."
Okay, thank you Ally, roll call please.
Mr. Garfield. He's on actual phone, we may need to unmute him. There you go, Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Stern.
Here.
Mr. Sable. Mr. Sable.
I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Flansbrough.
Here.
Mr. Herzl.
Here.
Mr. Renner. Mr. Isaacson.
Here.
Mr. Meyer. Mr. Ratzek. Mr. Ackerman. Mr. Fuente. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Swearing in of professionals, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, Mr. Vogt, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Onto resolutions. We have two resolutions, I see?
Yes. The first is SB 2109A for RD Lakewood. I'm gonna tell you who can vote on that. I know you're just about to ask me.
Okay.
Heim Sable abstaining to vote.
Thank you. Eligible to vote on the hotel are Mr. Garfield, Mr. Stern, Mr. Herzl, Mr. Isaacson, and Mr. Meyer.
Okay, I would ask for a motion on move one. Moved. We have a second.
A second.
Second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Not voting.
No.
The second one is SD 2448. It's a minor subdivision. Eligible to vote on that one is Mr. Garfield, Mr. Stern, Mr. Flansbrough, Herzl, and Edden Renner.
Okay, we have a motion on number two.
I'll move it, Justin.
Justin moves, we have a second.
I'll second it, Bruce.
Bruce, second, all in favor, aye. Okay, thank you. Let's go on to public hearing.
Our first under public hearing is an extension of a minor subdivision for SB 2233 for Zickron Heim. I believe this is the second extension for this minor subdivision. And I want to say Mr. Kishuba submitted this application, or Mr. Lyons, for sure.
I think that's KBA.
I thought it was two as well. I can share that. We don't have anyone here to provide testimony. I'm not sure that the board can...
So, let's get to the next one.
Can I talk on behalf of the applicant on this one?
Okay.
I don't have anyone to give testimony, but I think it's Marion Weinstein on behalf of the applicant, Zichwan Heim, Inc. I think I can just explain to the board what went on here. Compliance was never wrapped up on this since the applicant had some financial issues. The financial issues have since been worked out. Actually, I think the project was sold and there's a new owner. Construction has since commenced and we're just asking for an extension to get this completed now that there's a new owner. Not sure you need the engineering testimony on this because that's really the whole story.
I think that's usually sufficient for an extension.
Terry, are you okay with it? Do you have any comments on this application?
We don't have any objections, Chairman.
Okay.
Ally's correct. On an extension, the board has discretionary if it's to grant up to three years. A mandatory approval, you know, if they meet the extensions, if they meet the criteria, they're entitled to it. But if it's a discretionary one, the board may. And it's one every three years, or, I'm sorry, one three times a year. So, they don't need testimony for that. It's just a question whether the board thinks it's appropriate.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Dave.
Yeah. I feel that it should be refiled, the same as it is, but putting the new name of the new owner in there so there's a record of everything. And that we gave maybe the new owner permission. So if there's any question, it would be there.
Okay, Mr. Jackson?
Well, if that's...
Mrs. Weinstein just said it was sold. I mean, that's what Dave alluding to.
I think it's to be more precise, it's under contract to be sold. I don't even know if the closing actually took place just yet. I'm not representing the applicant on that sale. Last I discussed it with them, it had not even closed yet, but the new owner was taking over the costs and so all was gonna be in place to get this done at this point. The approval runs with the land. There should be no issue. We're just requesting an extension. And like I said, it's already under construction. We just want to be able to get this built and completed.
Okay. Is there sidewalks on this application?
I'm sure they had to put them in.
Let me just, in response... She's correct. The approval runs with the land. And really, who the user is or who the owner is should not be a consideration. The consideration will be limited to whether you think it's appropriate for this approval, under these conditions, to be extended.
Sir, the Chair, this is Justin. I personally see no issue with the extension request. I mean, like Ms. Weinstein indicated, the building's under construction. We granted this minor subdivision a while back. I personally see no issue.
Okay, no problem.
Just for the board's reference, there was a previous one-year extension granted. It looked like that one-year extension went through June 2019. Therefore, Ms. Weinstein, I'm gonna guess at this point you'll be requesting two one-year extensions to give you until June of next year to get that map filed.
That's correct, Ally. I would ask for two one-year extensions.
Okay, thank you Ally. Do we have a motion to grant the extension?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, we have to follow up on the question about the sidewalk. We won't follow up with that.
Okay.
There were surely sidewalks in the original approval.
Okay, Ally, do you have...
Mrs. Weinstein, Mrs. Weinstein?
Yes.
I'm looking at the resolution. I'm looking at number, what is it? G, George, number four. And it says that you actually mentioned that the county does not want sidewalk along the road in that area. And the board members, I haven't finished reading the whole thing, but there was a discussion about it that I'm not... On the plan, it does not show. It shows a easement for sidewalk, but it doesn't show that they're actually providing sidewalks.
So, I'd have no objection to providing sidewalk, provided that the county doesn't make an issue. I don't have a recollection of that particular issue. I apologize. I wasn't trying to be smart. I just totally don't remember it. Normally, we would certainly agree to sidewalk. Certainly here, the applicant agrees to put in sidewalk unless there's some sort of an issue from the county, which I don't know about.
I think we should discuss it now and make sure that we get sidewalk. Otherwise, it's... Anybody finish reading it? I'm gonna try to finish reading the resolution.
The original resolution here does say the plan show curbers proposed but not sidewalk. As you get further along, it says design waivers they are requesting from providing sidewalks along the frontage. Let's see if there's further testimony about this sidewalk. I do not, oh, here we go. This is where Mr. Sable was referencing condition four, or item number four. The board members agreed sidewalk is an important factor and denied the applicant's request for relief regarding sidewalk. They were trying to post a bond or similar for the installation of sidewalk. There is, this full application was for a site plan and a subdivision. So, that sidewalk may be shown on a different plan than we are showing here.
If it says the board denied the waiver, they clearly have to put in sidewalks.
We can ask...
On the plan that you gave us, it doesn't show. Remember them?
Well, if you look at four, the request was denied for relief regarding sidewalks, which would mean they have to put in sidewalks. But if you want to impose it as a condition, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, thank you. I was just going to suggest that that the motion should be to confirm and reassure that sidewalks per the original approval shall be mandatory. And she probably right. The date on the plan that we have is in 2017. So, could be, it's an old plan, not the updated plan. Maybe they never made an updated plan. Maybe they don't have to, but I guess sidewalks are a must.
It looks like the site plans themselves, which are the, this approval is for site plan and subdivision. You're only looking at the subdivision map. The site plans in my file for this project do show proposed for sidewalk along the full property frontage.
What's the date on that?
I have it saved as January 7, 2020. And the actual date of the plan says February 3, 2019.
Very good, thank you.
Get you welcome.
But that's, Ally, that's the last one, right? That's the latest one?
That's the latest site plan.
Okay, so I'm asking for a motion based on that resolution requiring the sidewalks.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to grant them two one-year extensions, provided that they're gonna stick to the resolution and they're gonna install sidewalks across their entire frontage.
Okay, thank you.
Heim Sable second.
Heim Sable seconds, roll call please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern. Hold on, Mr. Stern, I had muted you. Are you still here? There he is. Mr. Stern.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Hi, are you still there?
I am here.
Thank you. You have a motion on that? I mean, I'm sorry, do you have an affirmative or negative on that motion?
I seconded it and I...
Thank you. Mr. Flansbrough?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Onto number two, please.
The next one is SD 2452. It is a minor subdivision to realign lot lines for two lots on Sampson and...
Okay. Terry, would you like to go through the report?
Yes, please Chairman. Everyone should have a copy of our review, dated September 17. Bottom of page two of our review under submission waivers include the proof of submission, Doshen County Planning, Site Opo and Con doors. We can support the waivers as written in our letter.
Okay. I would ask for an engine's recommendation.
I'm thinking Mr. Justin.
Moved. And we'll hold time. Second, all in favor to grant the waivers?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Terry, please continue.
All right, continuing under section two zoning, page three of our review. Under variances, the applicant is requesting lot area, minimum front yard setback, side yard setback. We'll get testimony in terms of the adequacy of parking relief or whether relief's necessary. And then finally, under design waivers, we want testimony as proposed with regard to street trees. And if none, they'll have to get a design waiver as well. That's our comment, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Terry, are these variances existing or being generated by the realignment?
Thank you, one second. I'm gonna ask the applicant professionals to summarize the...
The variances.
Please. Yeah, this one's a little unusual. They're conveying one property onto the other. It looks like the houses are existing, but I want that put on the record, please.
Okay. So, who's here on this application, Ally?
I don't know.
Mr. Samanti, I think.
Charles Samanti.
The plan testified by Mr. Samanti. Yeah, he...
Any attorney on this? Okay. Mr. Jackson.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I can go ahead and swear, Mr. Samanti.
Yeah, please go ahead, thank you.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address, your name for the record?
Charles Samanti.
Thank you.
Okay, please proceed, Mr. Samanti. We recognize you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's...
Yeah, we'll just quickly tell you what we're doing. There's a 1,500 square foot stem coming out the back of a duplex lot that fronts on Dewey Avenue that Ally is panning through. We're proposing to take that stem and attach it to the lot on Sampson Avenue, which is now lot, existing lot 19. That'll make that lot go from about 5,700 square feet to about 7,200 square feet. Still a little shy of conformity, but much closer to conformity than it turns out. It will not create a non-conformity as to the lots on Dewey Avenue. 5303 and 5304 will still have a combined area greater than 10,000 square feet. We are proposing, pretty soon upon the approval of this, to construct a new home on the new lot 19.01, at which time, we will develop a plan that will provide the required four parking spaces. Right now, there are currently no off-street parking spaces on lot 19.
It's 1901, right?
19, to become 1901, yes.
It's become, and when you're gonna come back to build a house on it, are you gonna be violating any setbacks on that one?
No, no, the plan, well, I think we're going to match, we're looking to match, and I think we're permitted under zoning to do so, to match that front right corner of the existing house. And then every setback from there back and off the sides would be conforming to the sides of the rear.
So, basically, all you're doing is you're making lot, the new lot 19.01, much wider. Is that true?
And larger, larger and wider.
How is that long strips just hanging out over there?
Well, there was, prior to the duplex lots being developed, there was this little 10-foot strip that...
I don't hear you.
We lost Jeff.
Okay, now, now you're back.
We got, there was this little 10-foot strip that what?
Yeah, that strip originally extended all the way up to Dewey Avenue. But when they developed the duplexes on Dewey Avenue, that strip at that side of the property got taken over by the duplex lot. But it ended up as part of the mother lot, so it got assigned to what is now known as 5304, since it abutted 5304.
Okay. Do any board members have any questions from the engineer? I'm just gonna ask you, sidewalks, sidewalks you're putting in on both properties?
They actually exist on both properties.
Okay, and if they have to be replaced, you replace them?
Yes.
And is there anything in the report that you can't agree to?
No.
Okay.
Can you just address the one issue about whether a design waiver is required from street trees or not on 19.01?
For what, in street trees?
Are street trees being provided on 19.01?
Yes, they will be.
Thank you.
What did you say before then, though? Or was it just street trees?
That was it.
Okay.
Okay, there's no wetlands on this property, right?
No.
Because I know Dewey has wetlands. Sampson, Dewey. Okay, any questions, any board members? Seeing none, we'll open the... Yes, Dave, you wanna ask a question?
Yeah. There's no effect to the drainage, is there?
You mean, well, we're not doing anything right now, but when we develop lot 19, we'll develop in such a manner that there'll be no negative drainage impact. We haven't quite gotten that far yet. We're just trying to drop in a footprint right now. We'll comply with what we normally do when we submit for a single-family lot.
Excuse me, Chairman?
They'll be submitted for approval, right?
Yes.
And you're making not a duplex on it, it's a single-family. 1901 will be a single-family house, right?
Let me, single-family on, or will it be... Yeah. Yes, a single-family is the proposal for 1901.
And of course, it's undersized, I just wanna make sure. Terry, you have a question, yes?
Yes, I just wanna point something out in regard to the question about drainage. When they come in to develop the future property, we will require drainage at plot plan review.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Ally, is there anybody from the public? I would open to the public right now.
Yeah, not to single anyone out, but I think the only person who is not for a particular application is Ms. Higgins. I will unmute her in case she had any comments she wanted to share verbally. Hearing none, I also will double-check the file. However, I don't believe I've received any emails related to tonight's application. I don't have any public comments that were received by email.
And I would confirm that I did not receive any either, my end.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so...
You can close to the public.
Okay.
Is that you?
Yes, it is. I was just, my only question is, that single-family home, is it down on the end of my...
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Right.
We're just gonna swear you in first before you speak, if you don't mind. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Marie Higgins, 308 Sampson Avenue.
Thank you.
Did you get it? Okay, please proceed.
Okay, I was just, had a question regarding exactly where this single-family home is going on my street.
Okay, so Mrs. Higgins, I think the engineer testified that on 1901, he's putting a house and he will conform to all the setbacks.
I believe the address of the existing house that's being replaced is 300 Sampson, if the applicant's engineer would like to confirm that.
And maybe you could go to the area map on the plan and put that up?
Yeah, that's what we have. We identified it as 300 and the assessor identifies it as 300.
Ms. Higgins, this is Jim Jackson. I'm the board attorney. Can you, do you view the screen right now?
I'm actually just on the phone. I don't even have the screen up.
Okay, so, um, if, if the engineer for the applicant can please, uh, advise the nearest cross street?
Well, it's, it's, it's sort of across from Bergen, uh, opposite Bergen, a little bit to the right, um, between Bergen and the bend in Sampson.
Okay, we've answered the question, please, uh, any other questions?
Well, I didn't hear him, for one.
Okay.
Mr. Samadi, can you please repeat that?
House is between, let me get a north reference. It's, it's, it's north of Bergen.
He, he says it's north of Bergen, did you hear that?
It's into Sampson, and about, about fifty feet north of Bergen, and on the opposite side of the housing.
Sampson was fifty feet north of Bergen on the opposite side.
Isn't that swampland down at that area?
Further south, there is, the engineer testified, yes, but not on this property.
I, I've lived here all my life, and I've figured swampland.
If it's wetlands, they won't be able to build, I think that's the statement. Okay, so, the...
Any further questions?
That would be it.
All right, thank you very much.
So, the testimony is, the testimony is, there's no wetlands on this property?
Yes.
That comments.
Okay, okay, I will...
Or are there any comments?
There's no more.
No.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes, Terry, I just wanna, I just wanna close it to the public, I'm closing it to the public, now, Terry, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to interject on the question on wetlands, uh, we prepared an environmental constraint map of the area based on D E P mapping. Uh, there is wetland shown, uh, over a hundred feet to the south of this project, but not on this property.
Okay, okay, thank you. I, I would ask for a motion on this application.
So moved.
Hey, Dave moved, Dave gone for moved, second, who seconds it?
Second, this is Justin.
Justin's second, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern. Did I hear a yes, I'm sorry, Mr.?
Yes, hello, maybe.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, motion. Okay, on to number three.
Application is SP twenty-three eighty-three, I apologize, I don't know if I butchered his name, it's Mr. Fuad Kashoudi. It's a minor site plan for a building addition for the Exxon local head.
Terry, could you please go through the report, please?
Yes, please, Chairman, uh, as indicated in our October seventh review, uh, this is a minor site plan, so we have no submission waivers. Continuing on to page three of our review under zoning, the relief sought includes minimum for your setback to Kennedy Boulevard West, um, roadway dedication to County Line Road West, uh, side yard setback variance, um, there is, uh, an issue with the driveway which requires relief, uh, per our comment six, and we're going to want testimony as to, uh, freestanding signage and whether any relief necessary. Uh, I believe there, uh, is relief necessary for building-mounted signage, uh, as per our comment, uh, that's our comments, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, everybody who's not speaking, please mute yourself, because we have a lot of feeling. Uh, who's the engineer on this?
That's Glenn, that's Glenn Lines, and I'm the attorney on this.
Okay, so, Mrs. Weinstein, please go.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, good evening, board members, Mary Ann Weinstein, on behalf of the applicant, Fuad Kashoudi. Um, this application is for minor site plan approval to construct a fourteen hundred square foot addition to the Exxon gas, gas station and convenience store located at the intersections of Madison Avenue, which is Route Nine, West County Line Road, and Kennedy Boulevard. I'm sure you've all visited this site at one time or another and are pretty familiar with the site. Our testimony will show how well-suited this particular location is for such a use with access points on three major arteries in the northernmost part of the township. The purpose of this addition is to continue the existing use of a grab-and-go convenience store. The convenience store is still going to sell the same items and will provide testimony to that effect. They'll simply be expanding the number of drinks as well as the amount of prepared food to be sold. No cooking will be done on premises, food will be prepared elsewhere and sold as a grab-and-go, so someone can basically be getting gas in the morning on their way to work and can pick up, you know, a quick breakfast or, or lunch on their way out of town. The applicant just wants the aisles to be larger, to be more convenient, for anyone who's visited the convenience store up till now will know that the aisles are kind of tight, so the, the idea here is just to enlarge the existing aisles and add some more of the same of what's there. This is not going to be a grocery store or anything like that, it's simply going to be a grab-and-go, um, convenience store. Um, with that said, I'd just like to call to ask Glenn Lines to be sworn.
Uh, Mrs. Weinstein, are you losing any parking spaces by this addition?
No, and we're gonna, our testimony, obviously, let me call Glenn to testify that we, we, we will show you exactly where we are, well, we're losing parking spaces, but we're replacing them, actually, if you will. Glenn will show you exactly where we're replacing them, we're not requesting any parking variance, we will have ample parking. Um, but just so you understand, there will be people that will be parked at gas pumps, and while their car is at the pump, they're gonna be coming in to grab a bite to eat, or obviously, they come in to either pick up a container of milk or a lunch or something like that and just, and just run out. But again, not a grocery store or one-minute run-in-run-out, they're also gonna be enlarging the register area so that there'll be more registers, so that there really won't be a lineup, the idea being that there will never be too many cars in this parking lot. But with that said, let's get Glenn sworn, and Glenn will show you exactly where the parking is going to be and how this is all gonna work.
Ms. Weinstein, in light of all that testimony, I'd like you to raise your right hand, please, to swear a firm...
Glenn's gonna provide all the, Glenn and my client are both gonna get sworn and actually provide the testimony, you're right, John.
You're, you're probably a lot saster than him. Mr. Lines, please unmute your microphone, raise your right hand, do swear a firm testimony, you'll get before this board, but the truth altered, not the truth. You have to unmute. Hit unmute, line. There we go.
There I am, okay. Yes, I do.
Swear?
I swear. Glenn Lines, professional engineer, professional planner.
Okay, Mr. Lines, please go ahead, we recognize you.
Uh, as, uh, first answer the parking question, uh, we require thirteen parking spaces, and we're going to have, uh, fourteen strike parking spaces on site.
How, how much do you have now?
Uh, there's, there's eight or nine now, I know, there's, um, I think we lose two. Way we worked it out, we're losing two where the building addition is going, and we picked up one on the County Line roadside. Um, and there was one other that we had, the engineer recommended we delete off the plan, uh, is in a questionable location.
So, you need thirteen and you're, and you're giving us fourteen, you said?
Correct.
And it's one less than the, we have now?
I think overall, it's one less than we have now, yeah.
Okay, so, please, uh, tell us about your application.
Okay, uh, as in, we're putting in addition, uh, one story, uh, it's a thirteen hundred sixty-nine square foot addition, it's on the north side, or as you would look from Route Nine, on the right side of the building. Uh, the rest of the gas station essentially stays as it is, we're, uh, we're going to add, um, sidewalks along the front of the addition. Uh, we had one, um, tip island out by Route Nine and Butt Kennedy Boulevard, that little pointed island that, uh, it's, uh, on, right, right there where the arrow is now, that's just to protect those, the cars on the end, uh, from anybody coming up Route Nine. We're, because of the slightly odd shape of the lot, you know, everything, everything was built parallel to Madison, Route Nine, Madison Avenue, your property line is at an angle, so, uh, the addition is stepped, but we do have a variance at the, uh, north corner, which is, um, which is, uh, two, two point eight-eight feet, uh, which we require a variance for, uh, there.
And Glenn, what's the next property behind it? Is that commercial, residential?
That's a, that's a commercial lot, it was in for, um, a medical office from our office a few years ago, and, and the board, uh, I don't know, I don't believe the board approved the application.
Right, so, so it's a vacant land? It's a vacant land right now?
Right now, it's vacant land. A vacant lot there, and then the next thing along Kennedy Boulevard would be, uh, Sam Brown's Ball Offices.
Okay.
So, so right now, there's nothing there. Uh, there is, uh, six-foot stockade fence along that entire property line, uh, which does buffer us from the adjacent property owner. Um, there were two sheds, uh, which were behind the existing store where the building addition is going, uh, they will be removed, and there's another shed behind the trench closure, uh, that the applicant, uh, is requesting, uh, we'd be allowed to keep. Um, let's see, it's a number of other variances, most of the other variances are for existing items, um, we'll go back. Uh, we're, uh, we do have a new front yard setback of forty-five point nine feet, uh, I'm sorry, forty-three point twenty-eight feet between the addition and Kennedy Boulevard. Uh, the next one is, uh, current, on the opposite side of the building, currently, we have, uh, we have fifty-five point seventy-three feet from the building to County Line Road. We have proposed a road widening easement of, uh, it's down a little bit from, yeah, of, uh, eighteen and a quarter feet. Um, but, uh, as Terry pointed out, that if that, if that waiver isn't branded by the county, we wouldn't have thirty-seven point forty-foot front yard setback there. It doesn't change anything, the building's the same distance right now from the curb as it's always been, uh, but it's just that the county takes proper. Then, uh, drive, oh, the variance for driveway width, thirty-two feet is permitted with thirty-six feet. That's for the one driveway entrance over on Kennedy Boulevard, uh, it works nicely, uh, we don't have any real reason to change it to make two, four feet smaller, uh, so we are requesting that variance. And as far as all the, the free-standing signs, uh, those were all granted by variance, um, limitations and sizes years ago, so they're pre-existing, uh, non-conforming signs, uh, the, you know, the larger Exxon signs, and we would leave those where they are. Um, and let's see, uh, we had variance, uh, number eight on the plot of the due. Um, if, if you've been out to the site, there's, uh, a building-mounted signage bar along the building. We are proposing to extend that along the addition, so it would all look pretty much the same as far as, uh, advertising, uh, the, the site and the name of the building and what's there, uh, and that's, uh, four hundred and eighteen square feet, or sixty feet permitted. And those are the, that's, those are the variances we need. Now, e- everything will look pretty much the same as it is now, as far as variances go, except, with the exception of the addition. Uh, okay, Ally, Ally's pumping me along on design waivers, uh, we are requesting a buffer waiver along that West Philly property line. Uh, there's no, no buffer for now, there's, uh, trash enclosure and sheds, and on the other side, vacuum cleaner, air, air pump, uh, there's, uh, some storage bins for the propane gas. Um, basically, we'd like to leave all that the same and, uh, rely on the existing, uh, fence as a buffer to the adjacent vacant commercial property.
Okay.
Waiver number two is for, uh, planting street trees, um, if you've been or driven by the site, which is, is, uh, is, is, now, the, the site's beautiful, very nicely landscaped, well-kept, um, to, to dig up some of that landscaping, to plant, you know, a number of shade trees, a lot of which wouldn't be, you know, it's, it's two or three, uh, there's some extensive landscaping on both corners, if we were to add shade trees, they're then gonna be in-site triangles, uh, and the only two strips where you might be able to put a shade tree again are, uh, on Kennedy and, and County Line, which, um, you know, those, there's really not a, a wide strip there to plant those trees. We would request a waiver of the species in lieu of all the, all, all the landscaping.
Okay. Do any board members have any questions from Mr. Lines?
Yeah, Chaim Sable.
Chaim, Chaim, please go ahead.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just asking if the applicant will be, first of all, it's a very nice concept, and I, the landscaping is very nice, and I think it's a good idea. Question is, the applicant will be okay installing sidewalk from, I guess, both sides, but primarily from Kennedy to the building? So, pedestrians don't have to walk, uh, from, from Kennedy Boulevard? Yeah, uh, right there, right there where Ally is showing. We have, we have sidewalk on Kennedy Boulevard, you just need leading to the building, otherwise pedestrians will walk across the gas station, across those four parking spots. If the applicant will be so kind to provide that.
Um, honestly, I don't, I, I think that sidewalk would be out of the way, I think that human nature is just, if somebody's coming from Kennedy Boulevard, uh, I was out there a couple, a couple times, there, and somebody's just gonna walk across from, from where the driveway is now over to the, to the sidewalk. Um, and, and, and in the, and the last two times I was out there, no one was parking those four parking spaces.
So, I was out there as well, and I, I, I parked myself more than once, uh...
Glenn, it's, it's pretty busy, I use the, I get gas there, it's pretty busy, I think we need all the parking spaces, and I think Mr. Sable is right, we need a walkway, because it shouldn't block this, uh, the drive, the parking spaces, it's a small area. Yes, Terry.
I'm just looking at the plan in that area, uh, is the question whether they can put sidewalk behind those parking spaces?
Yeah, where it says, existing vacuum, uh, proposed bolards, they want, they're listening, I believe, for sidewalk in that area.
I mean, if you can fit it and be outside of all that stuff that's there, that's great. But in the event that you can't, my suggestion might be, uh, perhaps striping a crosswalk on the paving in front of those four spaces?
Yeah, Terry, I think...
Backing in and out.
But I think that's a better idea, there, there is stuff in the back where you're talking about, the propane tanks are there, where, you know, where you can, where you can purchase propane tanks. I, I just don't think there's any room to put a sidewalk over there.
What I'm looking at, I'm having a hard time seeing, I mean, I'm looking at the tanks in question, I'm looking at the fence which appears to be on this property, uh, and I'm honestly not sure if you have room to put sidewalk back there.
What about a path? Asphalt path?
You can try an asphalt path, it may only be two to three feet wide.
Okay.
Um, if the applicant's willing to do that in lieu of four-foot sidewalk, I just, like I said, I, I, I don't have any dimensions on here, but I'm having a hard time visualizing that you have room there.
Well, if the, if the corner of the building's two point eight-eight feet off the property line, that, that whole space isn't more than three to four feet wide, and there's other things in there.
Yeah, exactly.
We can move off the curb, the existing curb, move it further, uh, east, and, I mean, I mean, these are pretty deep, uh, parking spots, I think it's more than the standard, and we have extra until the curb.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's talking, I don't think anyone's talking about taking the parking out, uh...
It's moving a little east.
Okay.
I think that's something we could, uh, we could look into.
You know, Glenn, if that's something you wanna look at, either sidewalk or if it fits, or worst-case, an asphalt path?
We'll, we'll, we'll look at that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sable, all the board members have any questions from the engineer?
Yes, can, can you hear me?
Yes, Dave, please go ahead, Dave Groff.
I believe it was mentioned there'll be gas, uh, pumps in this location?
It, it's, uh, currently there, gas, uh, gas, okay.
The, I know, we're taking this, I'm on the Tran- County Transportation Advisory Board, and we're taking up the situation that's happening, and someone said... And someone said they'll, as they're getting gas, they're coming in and get, you know, stop and go and get food. The it is against county and state law to leave your car at a pump unattended. You know, maybe they should have signs on the pumps, do not leave a car unattended.
Mr. Garfield, if the if the engine is shut, it's uh you can't leave it there? And. Okay.
Unattended.
Okay. So they will have to comply?
Well, more than I'm asking, you know, did they put a sign up there on the by the pump areas?
No problem.
They're not leave uh car unattended.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Dave. Any other board members have any questions? Seeing none, I would open it to the public.
Actually, before you do that, I just want, if you'd like me to call the applicant just to provide the testimony that I shouldn't have provided, just exactly what's going to be sold there, or if the board does not feel it's necessary, I don't have to do so.
I think we can accept it as a representation.
Okay. Works for me.
I think we.
You can open to the public.
We all use that gas station, so we know it, we get us out.
Correct.
I know I know what's there. Okay. Uh, Ali, that's up to you now.
I haven't received any email comments. Um scrolling through our participants, Gillian, I don't know if you see anyone. I don't. So received any, Ali? Yeah, and I don't see anyone else on this email that on this chat.
Okay, thank you. I'll close it to the public and I would ask for a motion in this application.
Time table make a motion to approve this application. As Mrs. Smith wants been indicated, there's not going to be any kitchen. The applicant will look into putting sidewalk uh on the side of the property. And a sign on it, do not leave your car unattended, and Mr. Garfield requested.
Okay, do we have a second?
This is just a second.
Justin, you seconded?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Finkham. We didn't hear you, Mr. Finkham, or I?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Okay, on to the last application.
Our last application tonight is SP twenty-three eight-nine X for three oh six Chestnut. It's a change of use site plan exemption to convert a house to an office.
That application number twenty-three eight-nine and double A.
Correct.
Why?
What are you asking?
Why is it a double A? It was here before?
Oh, AA, AA is the signifier we use for all of our site plan exemptions.
Okay, no problem. Okay, thank you, Ali. Terry, please, you have anything to, you have a report?
Ye- yes, I do, Chairman. Uh I'm reading from our our October eighth review. Going to page two, we have submission waivers identified under Roman numeral one. Um typical for most change uses. We support uh the waivers for hearing purposes only. Uh what additional improvements the board requires may indicate that we may have additional we may have additional design information uh during compliance if board approval is granted.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to go along with engineer's recommendation to grant the waiver?
For hearing purposes only.
For hearing purposes only, right. Okay, do we have a motion?
Time table make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Lady Isaacson, a second.
Second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, now, uh continuing to our zoning comments, beginning at the top of page three of our letter. Uh you have a number of existing non-conforming conditions um with the house that will have to be memorialized for the requested change of use. Uh including um lot acre, I'm sorry, the the lot area size, lot width, front yard setback and rear yard setback. We're going to get testimony regarding the proposed parking. Uh and finally, a design waiver is required for two-way access aisle with of less than twenty-four feet. They have twenty shown and due to site conditions named with the wetlands and buffer. Uh they cannot go to twenty-four feet due to site limitations. I think that's our comments, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So Terry, you're not proposing any building on this property, it's just a change of use, is that correct?
Correct, it's a change of use and if you, I I'm getting a lot of feedback on my end. Um anyway, uh if you look at the change of use plan, they are not proposing exterior changes to the building. What they are proposing is uh significant changes um to the site access to provide all-street parking. If you look at that dark shaded area which is up against the county right-of-way on Chestnut Street, uh that's currently proposed uh for site improvements to support this building reuse uh for office, which is currently residential.
Okay, thank you. Who's the attorney on this application?
I am, Maryam Weinstein, on behalf of the applicant, three oh six Chestnut LLC.
Okay, and who's the engineer?
Glenn Lines.
Okay. Mr. Lines now, Mr. Lines, please raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony before the board.
He's muted, he's muted.
Unmute.
Mr. It's unmuted, okay, now.
I do.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, I'm going to uh I have to log out, I'm going to leave you in Gillian's capable hands.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, good night, John.
Okay, so Mrs. Weinstein.
Thank you so much. This application is for a site plan exemption, change of use approval for conversion of the existing two-story dwelling, as we discussed, as as was already pointed out, into a two-story office building with associated parking. This building will house the Lakewood office for Boney Olem Inc. For those of you who are not familiar with the Boney Olem organization, Boney Olem is a not-for-profit corporation that assists couples struggling with infertility. This office would be the Lakewood headquarters for this organization. And we will, I will, this one I will actually ask the applicant to testify, to provide um to to give the board more of an idea of what the organization does and to just, you know, to explain to you the discreet nature of the work that they do so you'll understand.
Maryam.
Yes.
I I'm I'm speaking for myself, Lady Isaacson, but I believe all of the board members are very, very well aware of what.
If you're all aware of a Boney, I don't think Mr. Garfield is so aware, but if the the rest of you probably are. If you're good, we don't need Rabbi Bachner's here, so whatever you want.
I think that's the situation.
Rabbi Bachner, thank you for everything you do.
We can bring him up to tell him thank you for what he does.
I I think, yeah, maybe we maybe we should put him on, he's definitely on on the phone, I don't know if he unmuted himself. Um a- after Glenn provides his testimony, he can he can say a few words and the board can the board can thank him for all that he does as well. Okay, Glenn, 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 at this point, I'll let you provide the testimony on this one.
Okay.
Glenn.
Yes.
Okay, ba- basically, all the variances are existing, right?
All the variances are existing.
Okay, so let's deal with the parking. You're asking for variance on parking, so it would like you to testify uh that you don't need the parking or how it's gonna work?
Well, we actually, yeah, we required thirteen and we have nine. The clock, the the applicant, um while, you know, that's the space that's a lot, the building comes down to thirteen. They don't, they don't need people there. You know. Two or three counselors and, you know, couples, they they, that's why it would have been.
I cannot hear them.
They spoke.
I can't hear him either.
You're breaking, you're breaking up, Glenn.
Right.
Gillian, can you mute the other people, please? There's a lot of background noise.
Okay, Glenn, please proceed now.
This way.
I was muted, now now we can hear you.
Um.
Thank you, Gillian.
The parking we have is really based on the number of, you know, employees and, you know, people they're counseling. How many people will actually be there at one time? Uh they do not intend to have, you know, I'd say four counselors and nine couples all show up at the same time.
Yeah, Glenn, Glenn, I I know this organization and I think that this organization does not want to counsel, you know, more than one person at the same time.
That's what I wanted Rabbi Bachner to testify to, but I think the board members understand that.
There's a privacy issue over here. And and Mrs. Glenn, it's gonna be strictly Boney Olem, you're not renting it out offices to anybody else.
Correct, this is Boney Olem's offices.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chairman.
Yes, Terry.
Uh if I can just ask a question, I heard the testimony about parking uh for the proposed use and it's certainly compelling. Uh what happens for whatever reason uh if the applicant decided to sell this property to someone else who was going to use it for a different office use and different staffing?
Okay, so my question is to Gillian. Uh if you're there. Can we use only for Boney Olem? And if any other office wants to use it, they have to come. And whoever. Somebody is throwing around pots over there. I don't know who that is. Okay, Gillian, you have to unmute yourself.
Um Chairman, yes, I I think that's that's fine, we can um, yes, we can um approve this application if the board feels uh you know, ready to approve it um for this particular use.
And should they sell it, we'll have other offices have to come back to the board? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so Terry, Terry, that would answer your question, right?
Yes, Chairman, thank you.
Okay, Glenn, back to you. Is there anything, you have to unmute yourself? And is there anything you don't agree with uh on the Terry's report?
No, the rest of the items in the report, I think, were uh, they were recommending uh waivers, um things that were required, lighting. And we we had no objection to uh any of the items in the letter.
And basically, you're. For all the variances, that it's an existing variant, you're not creating any new variances? And and the parking is what we discussed, it's a a privacy issue, so you have ample parking.
We have more than we need.
More than you need. Mrs. Weinstein, you want to put Rabbi Bachner on?
Yes, I think we should put Rabbi Bachner on just for one quick moment, let him say a few words.
Okay.
Rabbi Bachner, are you there?
Is he muted?
He's probably muted, can you unmute him, Gillian?
Yes, let me look through and see where he is.
Yeah, he's Shlomo Bachner.
Oh, yes, I see him here, let me unmute him. Miss Bachner, can you hear me?
Rabbi Bachner, are you there?
He was on twice.
Rabbi Bachner?
Mr. Chairman, meanwhile, while we're trying to get Rabbi Bachner, I have a question to Gillian.
Yes.
Okay, so the the applicant, three oh six Chestnut LLC. And now, if any time the Boney Olem wants to operate to a different location, they can just sell the LLC to a new owner. And the new owner can keep the the variances, the used variants and the and the parking variant.
Gillian, please mute everybody who's not speaking. I, there's so much feedback over here, thank you. Okay, Mr. Sable, does you, just unmute Mr. Sable, he was speaking.
Can you hear me?
I hear you, Mr. Sable, please go, I'm sorry.
Okay, so let me just, I I mean, I agree that we have to go out of our way to help Boney Olem and but they also understand that we're giving them a huge break on the parking. Uh my, our concern, I guess, somebody else, another board member brought up that if if they have a sale, actually Terry brought this up. If they sell, uh what's gonna happen with this uh waivers that we gave them? My concern is that this is owned, the applicant is three oh six Chestnut LLC. Uh can we restrict it to to the owner of being of three oh six Chestnut LLC being Mr. Bachner? Or I guess his wife? And not a third party, anybody else that wants to buy this LLC down the road and enjoy the variant?
Mr. Sable, the owner of that LLC is Rabbi Bachner. Um or his wife, I don't recall which one, but um it definitely, that entity is owned by the Bachners. Um we understand, I think that the board had said that they want the parking variants to be specific, only to Boney Olem. So that parking variants would would not exist, anybody else who would try to use this property would have to come back in front of this board because they can't use it because the parking variant is is gone.
Okay.
I wasn't questioning that, my question is that if at some point he sells this LLC, he could sell the LLC. LCs are are something you can transfer over to a new ownership for a different use. So so the the owner will still be three oh six Chestnut and enjoying these waivers, but now the new owner with 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 the LLC name of three oh six Chestnut can put in a real estate office there.
So so I think the question is for Gillian, will you restrict it strictly for Boney Olem?
For for infertility use?
No, I I think the question with the the use itself, we would say in the resolution, um you know, if if this, if another use is being proposed for this property, that, you know, it will have to come back before the board.
Or if the ownership for three oh six Chestnut LLC gets changed or sold, uh do we have to come back? That we can, can we do that?
I don't think we can do that, I don't think we can do that. It would just be that if the use gets changed, it would have to come back.
I, yeah, now, Boney Olem deserves everything, but the parking is really an issue if it becomes any other use except for Boney Olem. And I think.
But that's what Gillian just said, Gillian just indicated that if the use changes, that they'd have to come back for further approval. So it has nothing to do with the owner. If the, they can switch the owner and it wouldn't affect anything, but if Boney Olem is not the tenant at this property, then they'd have to come back, which I think is what you're asking for, and we're okay with that.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any any other board members have any questions?
I just got an email from Rabbi Bachner that says he's watching the process and he hears everything by phone, but he needs to be unmuted. So Gillian, if you could try to unmute him again?
Sure, let me try again.
Uh Gillian, he's been twice before, someone twice. Maybe.
I I do see him here and I just unmuted him.
Rabbi Bachner, do you hear us? Rabbi Bachner?
Gillian, you unmuted both of them, because right, I think he is there twice.
I got the second one. Mr. Bachner, are you there?
Rabbi Shlomer Bachner.
We can hear him now.
Jill, yeah, Gillian, you have to be affirmed if you want to speak.
Yes, please raise your right hand, you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I affirm.
Okay, thank you.
All I really have to say, watching watching this entire process, I'm amazed, thank you very, very much. People after work sit and try to help out everybody else. This office building is going to be helping for a huge amount of patients which are struggling with really life-altering issues. We're talking here about genetic issues, chromosomal issues, and fertility issues, high-risk issues. And as was said before, we do not see more than one patient at a time or two patients because these are very discreet and very, very private issues. We love the property, it's shielded off the road with a row of trees. Nobody sees who comes in or who goes out, which was a great add-on to our to our to our mission. Lakewood Supplies or or presents almost twenty-five percent of our patient base every year. We're talking about a huge amount of people. We thank God, opened up offices literally all over the world, but we're talking now nationally, United States. Lakewood is still one place, we've been looking for a long time to find something suitable. So when we found this property, all we're gonna do is just make it look like an office instead of being an old rundown house and everything stays as it is, so we can do with. So we can do with ease and with comfort treat the people from Lakewood Township. And I thank you very much all for whatever you're doing for us. Thank you.
Okay. Glenn, we thank you for what you do for the community. What you do for the community. Thank you very much, Rabbi Bachner.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Okay, Ali, I would open up to the public right now. Is there any else besides Rabbi Bachner on?
No, I don't see anyone on and I have not received any emails.
Okay, thank you. So I will close it to the public and I would ask for a motion.
Chairman, I.
Time table will proudly make.
Mr. Sable?
Maybe, Mr. Sable, one second, Ali wants to say something.
There's a number of design waivers that the board hasn't addressed, so I just want any motion to acknowledge the approval of those waivers, I suppose.
I read through them and I discussed, I would proudly make this motion to approve this only for Boney O'Leum and only for the use of infertility and such. And that's my motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Lady Isaacson, one second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield? Hold on, I need to go through unmuted board members who are going to vote. Mr. Garfield? Dave, you still there?
Yes, can you hear me? Yes.
Yes, is that a, is that a yes? Thank you. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Okay, approval of minutes?
Moved.
Moved. We have a second. Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Approval of bills?
Moved.
Second.
And second. Okay, before we adjourn, I just want to wish a very happy Mazel Tov to Jakey Meyer upon his engagement, on behalf of the whole board.
Congratulations, Jake.
Congratulations.
Jakey, we wish you the best.
Chairman, Chairman, I have one request.
Yes.
Him Mazel Tov?
Right.
Can you sing him Mazel Tov, Chairman?
I didn't know there was a song.
Okay, there isn't.
That's a request, nice.
It's supposed to be on a Tuesday night.
Okay, Mr. Flansbrough, you throw the party, I'll sing, okay?
You know, you got a deal.
Okay.
It's not supposed to not be on Tuesday night.
Repeating next week, so we won't see you till October 27th.
Great.
October 27th. Okay.
Ever will be due until then.
All right, Mazel Tov, good night, everybody.
Okay, everybody, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Stay well and healthy.
Good night, everyone.